Let me call to order the Williamsport City Council meeting of Thursday, March 31st, at 7:30 in City Hall Council chambers. Please rise for an invocation by Councilman Joel Henderson, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we thank you for the opportunity to serve in this way. We thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy in this nation. We thank you for providing us with the wisdom and intellect that you have, that we can make the right decisions. And we do pray that you would protect our homes, protect our families, protect this city. And we pray for special wisdom now in this meeting. Help us to use that wisdom that you've given to us. Help us to show the character qualities that come from you, that is, of honesty and morality and justice and goodness. And, Lord, may we show those qualities while we make decisions that would be in the best interest of the citizens here in this city. Lord, help us to remember that we are just stewards of what you have given to us, and may we do well with it. And we ask it in Jesus's name. Amen.
(Inhales) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is approval of City Council meeting minutes dated March 17th, 2016. May I have a motion and a second on that approval?
No move.
Second. The motion is second. Any comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Ms. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and those are approved. The next item on the agenda is limited courtesy of the floor. We've had no request for that this evening, so we can move on to the next item, which is appointments. I think the mayor will be presenting a appointment to the Williamsport Parking Authority. Mr. Mayor, how are you this evening?
I'm doing great. Good evening, Dr. President, Mr. Vice President, members of City Council. It's a pleasure to be here this evening, and it's a pleasure to bring a young man for your conference to the Williamsport Parking Authority. His name is Jared Kinley. His family's had a business downtown since 1972. He has a lot of great ideas, and I believe he will be a wonderful addition to the Parking Authority. Thank you.
Thank you. Got to have a motion and a second on that appointment.
No move.
Second.
Any comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Ms. Frank on the appointment?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Yes, and that appointment is approved. Do we have Mr. Kinley here for swearing in?
No.
No, okay. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we're going to move down because of several members in attendance this evening to the resolution to approve a Community Conservation Partnership Program Grant. Sorry for the surprise.
Resolution to approve a Community Conservation Partnership Program Grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for Brandon Park Rehabilitation Project. Whereas the City of Williamsport desires to receive from the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources a grant for the purpose of carrying out this project, and whereas the application package includes a document entitled Terms and Conditions of Grant and a document entitled Grant Agreement Signature Page, and whereas the applicant understands that the contents of the document entitled Terms and Conditions of Grant, including appendix referred to therein, will become the terms and conditions of a grant agreement between the applicant and the department if the applicant is granted, awarded a grant. Now therefore, it is resolved that the Grant Agreement Signature Page may be signed on behalf of the applicant to the official who at the time of signing has the title of mayor. If this official signed the Grant Agreement Signature Page prior to the passage of this resolution, this grant of authority applies retroactively to the date of signing. If the applicant is awarded a grant, the Grant Agreement Signature Page, signed by the above official, will become the applicant grantee's executed signature page for the grant agreement, and the applicant grantee will be bound by the grant agreement. Any amendment to the grant agreement may be signed on behalf of the grantee by the official who, at the time of the signing of the amendment, has the title specified in Paragraph One, and the applicant grantee will be bound by the amendment. The mayor and the city controller are authorized to execute the attached grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second on the resolution?
No move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Mr. Grado?
Good evening, President Williamson, members of council. This resolution authorizes the city to submit a grant application to DCNR for improvements to Brandon Park. Those improvements include creating a pathway from the intersection of Parkwood and Packer Street to the bathhouse, basically. It also includes the renovation to the tennis court located at Brandon Place and Elizabeth Street, as well as creating additional play areas, which is identified as nature play in areas both along the pathway and also within the Brandon Pool location. In addition to those is an expansion of the parking lot for handicap accessible purposes, since all of this has to be ADA, meet the ADA requirements. The city, you know, has reviewed the site plan. If you look at that, the one was prepared by Larson Design. Another one was presented as more nature play was presented by Brian Ammon. So our proposal for the application really is to provide the two locations for nature play apparatus. We're really not specific in where those are located. I know there's been some discussion, I guess, through the review process with regard to the pool location, but I wasn't able to attend both the Public Works Meeting and the Finance Committee since I was absent there, and I guess I just kind of wanted to expand on the intent for that. We did set aside in the engineering agreement $125,000 to accommodate that, and we're presenting that to DCNR. But I think specifically on what the nature play playground apparatus is and how much is located in one location or the other is still yet to be determined. So we really just set aside an amount of funds for that. We did, although we do have to have a construction estimate that's prepared by the engineering consulting firm, which was Larson, you know, they did that for the tennis courts as well as for the sidewalk area. One other thing, the nature play concept will also include stormwater management practices. It's based on our municipal separate storm sewer system, our NPDES permit, as councils are aware, we have to continually, as we look at public improvement projects, try to integrate stormwater management. It was determined that the nature play concept and stormwater management, best management practices could be incorporated as one. This really does meet the requirements or the goals of the state recreation plan, and so therefore, this is a competitive grant. We are applying for $250,000, 250, and that's a 50-50 match. We've allocated in the current community development budget half of that local match, and the intent is for the second half of that, the next $125,000, to come out of the $217,000.
$2,000.
$2,000. Sorry. $2,000. Forget that. What'd you say? So, and I think that's a competitive grant. We did, you know, we are under a deadline to get the grant application, and it's due on April 13th. We're getting letters of support from different bodies. I know we've requested it from the, we have to go to the planning, our Planning Commission. We've received it from county planning, basically meeting the guidelines of our, our comp plan as well as the county comprehensive plan. And, you know, Brandon Park being a regional park, it does meet that. I mean, those four items, and what I forgot to mention also, in the tennis courts is the lighting. We are upgrading the lighting, the tennis court, the current lighting system is deficient, the concrete bases are deteriorated. We are looking at LED lighting through there and throughout the park location. Along the pathways, we'd be creating new lights. That section of the, kind of the active recreation area is relatively dark, and the existing lights, there's about 39 overhead lights, they're metal poles, underground fed, they are high pressure sodium, and so they're dimly lit through the park, and the intent is to upgrade that to LEDs. That gives us an energy conservation component as well as an upgrading of the light level. So that also gives us more points when you're putting the application in. There, I mean, there is, was a survey, and that's kind of where some of the problems has been arising, that really, from the time that the survey came in, was evaluated by the County Planning Commission Assisted, their intern as well as Megan Lehman, did present it to the Brandon Park Commission. So I kind of went, saw the survey results before to make sure that our, the items that we were looking at were high on the list of what the users wanted to see, and that being safety and lighting, pathways, playground. I mean, tennis courts didn't rank relatively high, but that is a, is a facility that we need to continue to maintain and use. I mean, I, we kind of liken this to Memorial Pool. We started out, at the minimum, with a grant application, and as we got interest, we built up and created some additional items to address as more funding became available. We are going to continue to seek additional grant funds, even with DEP as part of the stormwater management component, if, you know, that becomes available, and would open it up for some additional improvements. You know, so we, this is really not the full master plan that we've been talking about with Brandon Park. I mean, this is like one component, and we expect other phases where we can look at what, kind of really delve into what the survey results were and have some more discussion on the final master plan of the park. But I think it's, what this is doing is giving us a, you know, a phase one start in what we feel is a competitive grant, meeting the state requirements. We did meet with the state regional advisor, Wes Farringer, and went over those items I just discussed, and he was receptive to that and thought it would be a good application. It was reviewed by the Public Works Committee and the Finance Committee, so I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Grado. Ms. Mealy from Finance?
Sure. Finance did review this, and we did forward it to City Council with a positive, shall we say, fiscal recommendation. However, we did make note that there seemed to be some issues with communication and process in the, in terms of putting together the grant, specifically communication with the Brandon Park Commission, which of course is specifically designated by the city to deal with matters pertaining to Brandon Park and advise the administration about matters pertaining to Brandon Park. That, those issues, I think, still very much need to be resolved. We heard from one member of the commission at our meeting, and I think that in order, you know, the, as we often note, the city is exceptionally fortunate to have individuals willing to serve on our boards and commissions, and, and in this particular case, the Brandon Park Commission did a lot of legwork, did put together a survey which provided some very useful, very interesting information and input from, frankly, I think from around the world. Although, how often, some of those folks are going to make it to Brandon Park, of course. Yeah, exactly. Maybe if we can post some images of the construction on our website, they can, they can continue to enjoy it, right? But, but anyway, I, you know, with paper, yes. That's an excellent idea. But anyway, financially speaking, this clearly seems to be an application that's going to ring a lot of bells within DCNR, provide a lot of different elements with, propose a lot of different elements within the park, even if we don't necessarily manage to live up to all of them, that, that will please DCNR, and the city seems at least currently fit to fund our, our match portion of it. We also, of course, have some interest from, potential interest from elsewhere in the community, and we're hoping to build. I'm sure that everyone noticed that, I believe, the funding total even for this relatively minor phase was $530,000, and yet anybody who added up the first page would note that we only have a total of 375. Consequently, a lot of, even what we're proposing to fund with this particular grant isn't paid for, a lot, excuse me, a lot of the, the sort of dreams that we have within the grant application aren't necessarily funded by the grant and the city's contribution. But, but it doesn't mean that we can't take care of some elements of the park, and as John says, hope to build on that. I would also note that I haven't had time to review the full survey results as of this time, but, but obviously, safety lighting was listed as the number one priority within Brandon Park, and we are addressing that. If, if we succeed in getting the grant, we will be addressing that issue. The reopening of the pool, I know on City Council, we've had ample discussion about how we simply can't afford it, but I don't think, even with this grant application, we're not totally closing the door to that. We're merely saying it's not a part of this grant. If for some reason a pot of money surfaces somewhere, that would be excellent, but I, you know, the, we have, even in the depictions that are before us, we're showing two different locations for a potential nature play area that once again may or may not even be covered funding-wise within the existing pool. One other quick note is that the conceived nature play area, depending on how it works out, would, could possibly check a number of different blocks on this survey. There's a, there's an item here for stream and wetland restoration that could almost certainly be met within a nature play area, and potentially Splash Park or something like that might also make the grade. It would, it would just be a matter of working out the details. So, as I said, Finance forwarded this to the full body of council with a positive recommendation, but, but did advise the administration that, or would advise the administration that we do have some continuing communication issues, and we need to make certain that we're consulting all parties and asking everyone for their input and listening to that input, even if in the end, the city has to decide to do what's financially possible for us, not necessarily all of the things that we would like to see in the park. Okay?
Thank you. Ms. Smith from Public Works?
Public Works meant, met this past Tuesday, and Public Works looks at this as a quality of life project. We as a city, one of the things that we're charged in doing is providing quality of life projects in places for the residents to meet, have different activities, and also plan for children's activities. I have been to Naog Park in Scranton and seen what they've done there. That's a beautiful park over there. If you've not been there, take an opportunity sometime and drive over there and look at that park. They've done a tremendous job with that. Brandon Park is really one of our gems in the city, you know, and I liken it to Central Park. I've been to New York and been through Central Park. I guess that we discussed that really we've got a gem there, but it needs a little bit of rehabilitation and brought up to current standards. And when we look at these proposed drawings and so forth of what could be there, it really looks like that it could be a very inviting location for children and folks of all ages. In order to put in for this grant, there obviously had to be plans, as Mr. Grado pointed out, and there were plans that were drawn up. However, I don't want folks to think that all of a sudden one of these plans is in concrete, because as we've gone through the process of other parks and other rehabilitation projects, it's subject to change. In order to put in the grant, we had to have some type of a plan. You just can't go in and say, "We want X number of dollars," but what are you going to do with those, those number of dollars? I think the plans that we have seen are very viable plans for that park. There's a lot of things that can be done in there. There's going to be a lot of amenities in the park, and the one thing that I had asked Mr. Simpson about, because he had brought that to our committee, I said I was trying to look at, trying to find in the nature area where the cages were going to be for the lions and tigers. So he didn't have an answer to that, so perhaps that's not going to be included, right, Mr. Simpson? It's also, we want to make it clear that we're not spending any money today, and how far this project could go is totally dependent on how much money we receive. Obviously, we're hoping to receive the maximum amount that we've applied for, but that's going to be obviously up to DCNR. And as Mr. Grado pointed out, it's also to include the stormwater management using the best management practices, which all developments, whether it be governmental or private developments, have to be cognizant of with the MS4 requirements. So we had a discussion, we looked at the plans, and other than the lion cages, we thought that these plans are very viable and could make the park move forward and give us a quality of life park that definitely needs some work done, you know? Over all the years, it's been a great park, there's been a lot of volunteer help, there's been a lot of help from city workers, but it's just now to the point where we need a little bit more rehabilitation to bring it up to, to current standards. So we voted with a positive recommendation to send it to full council with a positive recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Other comments or questions from members of council? Mr. Noviello?
Just to add to some of that, certainly this is long overdue. The park is one of our gems. I think it's been well maintained with the resources that we've had up to this point, but we are moving along in time, and I think the park should move along in time with us as well, and, and the site plan, as Mr. Grado alluded to at our meeting, is simply that, it's a site plan. None of those elements that we see in there presently are, again, set in stone, so we're looking for some flexibility in some of these things. We have an additional concern here to some extent, particularly with the time factor, at least in my estimation, and that's the fact that the pool sits empty as it is, and as such, it has become a concern for safety and hazards, and we've already had indications, or rather circumstances in our new pool where people have actually climbed the fence and got inside and done some damage. We don't want to see this take place at Brandon Park, we certainly don't want to see anybody injured there. So we're looking at a timeline here as well as the circumstances that surround the, the elements that might go into the park. I do also want to suggest that we do want as much input as we can from as many people as possible. The Brandon Park Committee or Commission is, serves as a good advisory committee, and I think their advice is, is necessary. It will play into the decisions that are finally made by this body, and I think that their advice and the advice of those who are working in our maintenance departments and certainly our recreation commission will also have a role in play in some of the advisories that we will obtain by listening to their input. So I'm looking forward to this getting off the mark as quickly as we can. Obviously, we know that sometimes government wheels turn rather slowly. Fortunately, we have Mr. Grado at our advantage, and we know that he's been very successful in doing what he's done for us, and I look forward to more of that, Mr. Grado. Thank you, Mr. President.
Absolutely. Other comments, question? Ms. Katz?
One of the things I'd like to say is I'm really pleased that there are so many people who not only volunteer their time on the, on the commissions, but are so passionate about what they do, and it just, it brings a full body flavor to what is presented to us. The other thing that was, was fantastic is with the survey, how many people did go online to take the survey? That in itself, when you stop and think how busy everybody's lives are, just to take that time to fill out everything, it shows the passion that everybody has for Brandon Park. This is one of our jewels. This is the gem, one of our gems in the city, and we want to do this right. We want to make sure that the people that care so much have some input into this. We do want to get the money. We are in a time crunch here, and nothing is written in concrete, and I want, I would like to make sure that everybody's input is taken and, and assessed at what is important to, to us. And to have this many people so passionate, again, I, I thank you all for what you've done.
Thank you. Ms. Allison?
I have a couple questions about some of the items, but I think as far as the lions, I think we're going to go with squirrel and rabbit and bird cages, and use the natural habitats already there.
But they'll be shaped with names like lions.
It could be mitten lions.
It could. Well, that depends.
That's what Bill said.
That would be.
No, it would be. That's right. We can win in other ways, right, Mr. Nichols? Nothing? He wasn't listening.
We had a little bit of discussion ahead of time, just how much we can deviate from, like, some of the general ideas. We can't substitute a whole different idea for, that was some of the understanding.
Well, I, I mean, I guess it's even in the amend, amendment, I mean, in the resolution, it indicates that amendments can be provided to the grant.
Did that mean post-submission, they can be provided?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. And we're doing that actually with Way's Garden. We've got the grant. I think one of the issues with Way's Garden in the state, when we got the $90,000, was the parking lot, so we wanted to put some lighting in there. So they would rather not fund the parking lot since that's something that we're looking at, is kind of negotiating with a private party, so, and, but it would be included in the overall. So we're kind of looking at an amendment to that, and revising the scope. So you can do it, as long as it's consistent with what they really have given you the funds for.
Right. Stay in the spirit of it.
Right. So I think, you know, playground, you know, we're talking that, lighting, and the ADA parking and the tennis courts, I mean, where that gets put in, I mean, we've got a concept plan here. I think our intent really, I mean, Brian and Ammon, you know, did a nice job on the nature play concept when they did the presentation to the commission. We were incorporating that, but it's not, it's in the site plan, but we're really not defining exactly where everything goes and what it is. We did indicate that we're kind of, it's an adaptive reuse of an existing pool that has been decommissioned, let's say. You know, how we're doing that, you know, really still has to be determined, and until we get the grant and can bring the consultant on board, and I think our intent at this point, since we have Larson under a, an open-end contract, is really to use Brian under the nature play portion combined with Larson, who would do more of the general engineering and designing of the lot and the surveying and such, and we still have to bring that before City Council with the overall plan. So we may have additional funds by the time, you know, if we're successful, and by September of this year, indicate that we get a grant award of 250, if not, we, you know, we may get less than that. You know, we'll have to really kind of look at the scope of work and which of our priorities based on that, or if we based on that, or if we have more funds, we can do a little bit more. But we still have to come back to city council with a final plan. But, you know, to answer your question about the amendment, we can amend it as long as it's within the, kind of, the spirit of the grant that DCNR gave it to us, so.
So, and then, when, suppose we got the whole $250,000, or whatever amount we get, and we get approved, can we still go ahead with any public-private partnerships within the scope of this plan, and it won't affect?
Yeah. I mean, we can do that. I mean, if it's more, I mean, sometimes when we deal with just the state, we don't want to include the entire project within that. If we have more grant funds, we kind of keep that separate, because they're really kind of, they're reviewing just the portion of the $250,000 that we're looking at in our local match. So we try to keep that separate. So, I mean, so we could modify, and whatever is outside that scope of that $250,000 in the local match, you know, is really ours to deal with, so.
The other, the overhead light replacement estimated at $46,800. That's, is that lighting throughout the park, then?
Yeah. Our intent is to put the new fixtures, similar to what we've done in the Broadart neighborhood. We've taken the existing light poles and left them in place and put new luminaires on. And there's about 30, I guess it's 39 or 36 lights. And that would, we're actually over the $500,000. I mean, we're at 585. That's with contingency, and we're still at 535, so we would end up reducing the number of lights that we would be putting in the grant application, because we have to be within the $500,000, unless we've got additional funds that we can sign for that. But that's kind of where we would reduce the units.
Is that lights on both sides of Packer? In that, or is that just south?
That's on both sides.
Sure.
Yes. Yeah, most of the lights actually exist on the passive side, between Market and Packer. It's rather dark in the active side, except for the areas where we have, when the ballfields are lit and the tennis courts are lit. But the area lighting is kind of deficient, and that's where we're putting new lights in. So we're either upgrading it, some of those smaller lights, the pole or the high-mount metal poles, where we're increasing the light levels there, so. And then we're adding new lights along the pathways.
And then the timeframe here. Can you refresh my memory?
Well, I mean, the grant has to go in by April 13th. They review it, and typically will, usually it's September, October, that you would get a grant award. We would engage the consultant at that time and then do the final design plans, getting ready for bids over the winter time, so that we can be under construction in the spring of 2017.
Okay. So it's, that's more of a drawn-out process. In the meantime, then, we submit our application, we get the grant, then, do we have plans about the pool? And how quickly is that anticipated?
Yeah, I think, I mean, it's kind of at council's direction to get what are our plans for the pool, and the intent is to fill both pools, Brandon and East End. I know we've gotten quotes to do that. I don't, there's no funds in place, so I think we're coming back to city council, or I know Justin is going to come back to council with a proposal for filling the pools in and securing a source of funds to do that. I think our-
Outside of the grant?
Outside, yeah. I think the intent at this point is to fill the pools in, grass them over, plant grass in both pools, East End and Brandon, but it's still got to come before city council. So if there's a discussion where that is not the intent, I think we can discuss it then, but we're going to be coming back to council for some funding for that.
The pools, oh, okay. So what's going to be discussed?
Decommissioning them, you mean, the, filling them in?
Yes.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
There are some issues with the pools themselves because of the water that's contained in the pool, because of the different viruses that generate from the stagnant water, which is a code violation, which we would discuss also at our meeting.
Joe or Joe, or Joe or Justin, who might respond to this. Didn't we, in previous year, isn't there a chemical or some solution we put in the water so that it doesn't produce the kind of fears we're concerned about?
Up at Memorial, we did add chlorine to that pool, but it has to be able to circulate through it, and there's no pumps at either one of the pools. We've actually removed everything from East End and Brandon and took it up to Memorial, because East End is the same size as Memorial, so we can use the same sort of pumps, gate valves, things like that, up in that pump house. As the same for Brandon, we were able to reuse the pump from Brandon up at Memorial and took some things from out of that filter room up to Memorial, so we could use it in both pools.
Thank you.
Let me comment on several of these issues. First, to go back to the pools, and maybe we, as members of council, didn't do as good a job as we might have over the last, I think it was a five-year period, decision-making and tour-a-thon, to think about and plan for and do feasibility studies and wrangle about what to do with the future of pools and water features in the city. And ultimately, we came, I think, within a hair of saying we can't afford any water pool features in the city at all, because of both the capital cost and then the ongoing maintenance cost of those. Instead, because, as Mr. Smith said, quality of life is a part of what we take on, we were able to kind of double down and really consolidate what limited resources we could scrape together to build and then develop a plan to maintain over the long term, hopefully, the Memorial Park pool. But at the same time, we said, we need to make sure that, that, one, the public knows that that was a very hard decision. Maybe we didn't do a good enough job of that. But, two, that we decommission those pool, the other two pools relatively quickly, mainly for a public safety standpoint. We talked a lot about that at the time. And I hadn't even thought about the public safety from the bacteria and viruses as Mr. Blank, gee, I want to say Girardi. It was just, all I could think of was Mr. Joe, and that wasn't going anywhere. Mr. Girardi was talking about. The part that I keep thinking about is the somebody hopping fence and either falling in or doing something in a way that somebody gets hurt, and I think we really need to take care of that as soon as we possibly can, probably faster than the timeframe that we're talking about in terms of the grant application. And, you know, while I don't, I try not to close my mind off to any possibilities, it would be a real challenge for me to think about how we could, one, afford the capital expenses, to kind of revisit the issue of affording the capital expenses of water features, and then knowing what I know now about the long-term maintenance of those, being able to take on another maintenance cost for another set of water features, whether it be Splash Parker Pool or whatever else. So that's one point. The second point that I'd make is that I think, I think Ms. Mealy was talking about, the need that we all have to continue to work on improving our communications across groups within the community. It's a hard thing to do, to maintain the level of communications that ought to be maintained between individuals and between groups and between sections of the city, but it is imperative that we do that. I think in the case of some of the stuff that's been in the paper, part of it may simply be a timing issue, right? We've got to get a grant application in before the kind of survey digestion process was fully complete. On the other hand, I think, you know, some of that could also be dealt with communications. I think it's a good thing to hear that this is a conceptual plan that we will allow to be adjusted, and that Brandon Park's input, having led the process that resulted in this survey, it'll give them time to digest it more and draw larger conclusions out of it. And then we'll also have to digest it. We, as a member of council, are just seeing it for the first time and really haven't even seen Brandon, the park commissions, or even the administration's full interpretation of these results. I do surveys. In fact, I've done surveys about parks in the city of Williamsport before I got involved in local government. There are a lot of things that people want. I quickly flipped through these results and saw that every idea that was generated had support, and almost every idea that was generated had a support of the majority of the people who responded to the survey. Well, that's a good thing. That means it was some really good, interesting things. Then we have to match it up with what the budget allows for. We need to prioritize it, and there's a lot of ways to parse survey results in a way that digs deeply into what the public's priorities are. And then, of course, we have to match that up with the funder's priorities in terms of DCNR or wherever else we might get grants to go along with our local funds and the decisions that we'll ultimately make. So I would not, I'm not that concerned about the sort of tension that seems to temporarily have emerged about this moment, which is really just a first step in terms of government action in response to the ongoing planning and process that the Brandon Park Commission has undergone, and the still incomplete set of recommendations that they're assembling and will pass along to us, and won't be a one-off kind of thing. It'll be an exchange. Well, what about this? Can you answer these questions for us? What does the administration think? What does council think? What does the public, how do they respond to the kinds of plans that emerge from both the Brandon Park Commission and from our own heads, et cetera? We saw that, what was it, 10 years, 11 years ago now, when we did, when the city was involved in master planning for a number of the neighborhood parks? We've had some of those discussions around Memorial Park, and now it is natural to have us have that back and forth, but it's on all of our shoulders to make sure that when our ideas have evolved, we communicate them others and get feedback on those ideas, and then keep the process moving in a way. This won't happen quickly, at least anybody's plan from beginning to end, but the very fact that we're talking about it and taking actions in all the appropriate ways means that whatever ideas we have now will get better, whether that's the commission's ideas, council's ideas, the administration's ideas, even John Grado's ideas, I've seen get better over time. They start out pretty darn good, though. So I wanted to make those few points about all of this. Any other comments or questions from members of council? Mr. Henderson?
Yeah, let me just say this. I think it's, if, I'm a pastor, so I like to illustrate things. We could kind of look at it like a ship. We're just setting out now in a direction, and what this grant application does is get us moving, so that now with our, with the commissions and the input of everybody, we can begin to really work the rudder. But it doesn't work unless it's moving. And so this just gets us moving, and now we have the opportunity, and I think that's what this is, it's a real opportunity for us to begin working together, to work that rudder, to get us going in the right direction. So that's kind of how I see this. This is getting us moving. Now we fine-tune, and now we really get to narrow it down to where we're going.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing now Ms. Frank on the resolution.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution is approved. Thank you, Mr. Grado. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance in final reading approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances. Mrs. Frank, please.
An ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as part of the various component codes of the codified ordinances of Williamsport, Pennsylvania.
Thank you. Okay, a motion and a second on that ordinance in final reading, please.
Don't move.
Second.
Mr. Lubin, do you have anything further to add? Nothing further. Any comments or questions from members of council? Hearing now Ms. Frank on the ordinance in final reading.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the ordinance is approved in final reading. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance amending Article 199 of the codified ordinances related to the East Third Street Gateway. Mrs. Frank, will you go ahead and read the full thing, please?
An ordinance amending Article 199 of the codified ordinances, East Third Street Gateway Revitalization Ordinance. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Williamsport as follows. Section 1, Article 199.02, membership term is hereby amended to read as follows. The East Third Street Revitalization Gateway Advisory Commission shall consist of 12 members who shall be appointed in the following manner. Four members shall be residents of the city and appointed by the mayor. Four members shall be residents of the city and appointed by a majority vote of council. One member shall be a member of council's Economic Revitalization Committee, who shall be appointed annually by the president of council. One member shall be the mayor or the mayor's designee. One member shall be a Lake Coming County Commissioner or designee, and one member shall be the president of Lake Coming College or his designee. The initial term for the members appointed by the mayor and by a majority of council shall be as follows. Two of the mayoral appointments and two of the council appointments shall serve a three-year term, and two of the mayoral appointments and two of the council appointments shall serve a five-year term. Thereafter, appointments to the commission shall be for five-year terms. Vacancies in the commission occurring otherwise than by expiration of term shall be for the uninspired, expired term, and shall be filled in the same manner as the original appointments. Article 2, Section 199.03, purpose is hereby amended to read as follows. The commission shall be advisory to the mayor and city council on the revitalization of East End of the city in an area bounded by the alley north of Washington Boulevard and Lake Coming College along the northern edge. Market Street on the west, Interstate 180 on the south, and Catherine Street at the city border on the east. The duties of the commission will include, but not limited to, examining the effects of zoning, planning, parking, and the seeking of grants and other sources of funding for this area of the city. City boards, commissions, authorities are authorized and directed to cooperate with and assist for the commission. The commission is authorized to create advisory subcommittees and appoint its members, one of whom shall be a member of city council.
Thank you, Ms. Frank. Can I have a motion and a second on the ordinance?
Don't move.
With a motion and a second. Let me, I'm slated to present this. One, let me start with apology to members of council and the administration. I took on the task of developing the amendment last fall because of other legal matters and working with the solicitors. I kind of dropped the ball to settle those other more pressing legal matters, and I'm just now getting back to it. So that's one reason it's delayed. But let me remind you, and also bring Ms. Councilman Henderson up to speed a little bit. We, at some point in the past, I don't remember the exact date, created the East Third Street Gateway Commission. Its membership was about, I believe it was seven members. And then soon thereafter, established a, an advisory committee that was made up of 12 members, that included all the members of the commission to lead the process of working with a consultant to develop plans for the area east of Market Street, known as the East Third Street Gateway, including the area known as Old City. And that process went well and developed a good set of plans that were in the midst
of working our way through in conjunction with the county of Lycumming, Lycumming College, and private landholders and developers in that area. And so I think we were all happy with how that process proceeded. At the time that the plan was adopted, I think it was a consensus that the membership of the committee, the larger committee, was... functioned well and should continue as a body. And also that the jurisdiction of the larger committee that incorporated a larger geographic zone in that part of town was also appropriate and should continue. And therefore, I took on the task of revising the existing ordinance on the commission to be able to expand the number of people and the geographic jurisdiction of the area that they'd be looking at and making recommendations on. And so this amendment to the ordinance does... accomplishes those two tasks. My intention, which is the intention as president of council, which I think reflects the intention of all of those involved last fall, both on the committee and the commission and in the administration and on council, was... would be to work with the president or with the mayor to ensure that, following the new ordinance, that all members of the 12-person committee became the same individuals that were on the 12-person expanded commission. I think I have all these terms right. And so the transition goes smoothly, and we'll figure out who appoints who... whom to go into which spot. And that's, of course, assuming all of those individuals would want to continue to serve. So with that, I believe this was discussed at the Finance Committee on Tuesday. Mrs. Mealy? Ms. Mealy?
It was discussed pretty minimally. We did pass it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation, especially in light of its utter lack of financial effect.
And the reason it was sent to Finance is because there was no ERC committee meeting, which is where the ship gone.
Exactly. No, but we did discuss the fact that all of this was material that had been discussed, obviously, long ago when... toward the end of the visioning study within the East End, and none of it was surprising and should result, especially from my perspective as the current council appointee to the committee that was, that once again will be. Accomplished everything we had discussed and leaves us in a good position to create a committee slash commission to oversee further progress in the area with the group that already successfully oversaw the visioning study, so.
Thank you. Maybe a commission formerly known as...
Right, right, right.
A symbol. Other comments or questions, members of council? Ms. Noviello, did I see you? No. Others? Mr. Allison?
Just to... I've been asked by different people, what's going on with the East Third Street project because no one's heard much lately. So to use this as an opportunity to address for the public, we initially... I'm going to backtrack a little bit. When we initially looked at this area, we talked about having a traffic study. And we've mentioned this before, but I'm going to go over it. When we met with different stakeholding groups, and especially the county, said, "Well, you don't want to start with the traffic study. Start with people who want to develop it. Start with those who have a stake in it already and see what they want to do, and then you'll get an idea of what you need for a traffic study." And we did that, and that worked. We got a commission. We got a cooperative group with the county and Lycumming College, and we were able to fund a consultant study and look at that area and come up with ideas and plans for the future and a direction. Then it was time for the traffic study. So we commissioned that, and again, through a cooperative effort, that was funded. Now, Mr. Garetto, the traffic study's done.
Yeah, it's about 90% complete. We're still having discussions with PennDOT, so the analysis of all of the intersections has been completed. So all of the data work is complete. So we are still meeting with them to address some of their needs because this is, again, about the two-way system between Basin Street, Market Street, and also, as you know, the contra bus lane, too, was added to that as part of that project. So we are about 90% complete.
Great. So that's where we're at. We've kind of come full circle from where we started to this point. We're back to the traffic study, and when that's completed, and we get a chance to digest those results. And it's also timely to have the commission ready to go now to pick that up. And as Councilman Henderson said, the ship needs to be moving in a direction so it can be steered. So essentially, that's where we're at. We'll have... we'll be able to get things moving again. Different entities, Lycumming College and others, have ideas and plans pending the outcome of the traffic study. So the plan is, once that's in place and we have the information, you'll begin to see development there. Plans for development. Everybody bear in mind that development doesn't happen overnight, even though somebody has a plan, just like we heard with the Brandon Park plan tonight. It's still well into next year before that's done. So, you know, we knew going in this wasn't going to be an overnight production. It was going to take time and effort and investment. But down the road, we're going to have something I think we're all going to be happy and proud with. So that's the part the new commission is going to play with that or play in that whole process.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? And I think all of those points are well taken, but it is interesting to see that, at least I'm aware of, two sets of development plans that have emerged since we've launched this process. And so that's very good to see.
It is.
And hopefully, that will be followed up quickly with many more.
Yes.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing now Ms. Frank on the resolution. I'm sorry, the ordinance in first reading.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and that's approved in first reading. We'll see it again in a couple of weeks. Next item on the agenda is resolution authorizing an agreement for codification of ordinances. Ms. Frank, could you do this one in short form, please?
Resolution authorizing the supplemental agreement for the codification of the city ordinances and obtaining the codified ordinances for website use with American Legal Publishing Corporation.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second on the resolution, please.
Don't move.
Second.
Thank you. And, Mr. Lubin, how are you this evening?
Good. Good evening, Dr. Williamson, members of council. With this agreement, the prior company we've been dealing with for codifications is no longer going to be in business of doing codification of city ordinances. Mrs. Frank started then searching for a replacement company. She contacted a number of city clerks within the state to find out who they were using, and many of them said, "With Keyston State, we're pretty much in the same boot you're in. We're going to be looking for another company." She contacted a number of publishing companies, and I know in my discussions with her, we kept coming back to American Legal. And in fact, through her efforts, a couple of other municipalities are probably going to be contracting with them. And it's a three-year contract. However, the contract does provide that the city can opt out at any time with or without cause within the three-year period. And they've also locked in their... excuse me, their rates for the three-year period. And we'll be doing the codification pretty much similar to what our current company had been doing. There's one other matter, though, that they would be willing to do, and there's obviously a cost involved, but they would review our existing city code book about the possibility of recodifying it and updating some of our ordinances. I know that they had quoted a partial cost, but I think part of it would also involve how much they would have to do. And I believe this went to the Finance Committee.
All right, thank you, Ms. Mealy, from Finance.
We did review this at Finance and established that while it is an increase over our past annual cost, it's not a substantial one, especially given the rather extensive compliments paid by the gentleman from American Legal Publishing, Janice. He said that when our city clerk had reached out to a number of other municipalities to ask about their experiences with their existing codification companies, and as a result, he had received multiple calls from other municipalities. Consequently, he has... the American Legal was willing to offer us a substantial discount on our first year with them. The... I believe it was... Randy, you might have to help me with this. Ordinarily... what's that?
Seven fifty.
Well, yeah, it would ordinarily have been seven fifty, but it's four fifty to have our code converted and posted online. And then there was a... what they were anticipating was going to be a $500 fee for creating an index for the code that they were also going to waive. Janice suggested it as an idea, and they decided to add it to their listing of services and do ours for free. So I believe it was a total savings of something like $800 for a lot of the initial work. And then, as of next year, the cost will be a simple $250 for hosting our code and providing a searchable code, and then $17 a page for every modification we make. We did spend a substantial amount of time discussing the possibilities of recodification. And while Finance certainly wouldn't endorse anything one way or the other without a bit more information and a look... a harder look at our existing code, it does seem like something perhaps the city should at least consider within the next couple of years and see exactly how outdated our code is and whether or not it's a service that we could utilize. I believe the predicted net cost was something in the neighborhood of maybe $15,000.
Thirteen, five hundred.
Yeah. But then I think there were some flexible costs that might bring it up a little bit.
But it could be done over two years.
Yeah. And a few other notes. The company is also... they do have an attorney within the state of Pennsylvania. She operates out of Pittsburgh, which gives her particular expertise in terms of Pennsylvania law. And they also are capable, in addition to keeping our code online and providing a pretty intensively searchable ordinance selection online, they could also keep our minutes, our resolutions, other items if we should ever so choose to have all of that information stored through the... through American Legal. I believe that's everything. It was forwarded to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Other comments or questions from members of council? Mrs. Katz?
This was really an impressive company to... they do work for such cities as Philadelphia, New York City, San Francisco, Los Angeles, South... I mean, it was all over and very intelligent, very... I feel very comfortable with this. But it was also very... it was great that our city clerk did so much research and was able to save us money and also helped the company add another service. And the other thing that they have is they do have, as Mealy said, an attorney here in the state, but they also have 16 attorneys that are in their office, plus they have 40 employees. And they're very well-versed in everything that they're doing. And it was... it was just really... I mean, their whole presentation was really impressive. So I feel very comfortable with this company.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Ms. Allison?
Yeah, I want to echo the comments, Councilwoman Mealy and... Councilwoman Katz. I'm reading this and trying to talk at the same time.
It's apparently...
It's catchy today, isn't it?
Mr. Joe.
I can't walk and breathe at the same time. I can't think and read at the same time. In any case, Janice didn't know I was going to do this, but, I mean, without being there, it's hard to convey how impressed they were with her. So I called Mr. Frohmeier to speak to him about it because he made some statements, and I asked him to... could he email me some of the things that he had told us? And he was kind enough to do that. So I'll just read this to you. "I spoke to him this morning, and then he emailed it to me later. Dear Randall, it was a pleasure meeting with you on Tuesday and talking with you this morning. As I said, I've been in this business for 22 years, and your city clerk, Janice, really is looking out for the city. She did a great job of research on this project. She had great questions, and I knew she had done her homework based on the questions she asked." And he told me afterwards, he said, "Usually, when they talk to a city clerk, they ask them, 'Well, how did you find us?'" "Oh, well, so-and-so, our neighboring borough or city uses you, so we're going to use you, too." And they never ask any questions. And he said, "That's not the kind of client that they really want. They want people that are engaged because they have a lot of cutting-edge ideas and things, some of which we can't afford, obviously, but things that, you know, you can avail yourself of." "She had called all the companies. She contacted the other clerks, asking their opinions, and then did face-to-face interviews. She asked questions that normally we get from the largest of cities that have huge staffs." And you're talking the ones Bonnie was talking about. And they just picked up New York City, he had told us. "I even told her I was impressed in my interview with her a couple of weeks ago. Because of her research and questioning, we are actually providing the city for free a general index online, something we typically don't do. She also saved the city money because I lowered the price to our actual cost to build the code into our software." That was another benefit we got. And this man is part owner of the company. "In her research, a couple of cities similar to your size actually called us, and we appreciate that, so that is why I lowered the price. We have already met with these cities, and they are very interested in our services, where before we couldn't get in the door. I look forward to working with Janice because she is looking out for the city and will be pushing American Legal to provide Williamsport with great service. You should be proud to have a dedicated city clerk." And I just want to say, we are proud, and thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you for following up on that. Other comments or questions? I was just going to add, when Ms. Frank came to me a couple of months ago to say, "Oh, yeah, you know that thing you take for granted that shows up and makes you have to put pages in every year, codified ordinances, which is a pain every year to do, sit down and update it, but needs to be done?" Well, the company that we've used basically forever will no longer be around to do that. What should we do? And I said, "I don't know. Can you work on it and figure it out?" And so I really do appreciate you taking the task on and doing what has been a great job and keeping me updated along the way about the steps she was taking. And it sounds like she found the right company for the right price, so thank you very much. And one of the things I would ask is, can Finance try to, you know, think about that with the administration in terms of recodifying the ordinances in the future, especially... Norm, when's the last time we've done this? And how often should we have done that, which might be two very different answers?
I think that the basic codification that we have was created in the '70s.
When we changed forms of government, probably.
Changed form of government.
And is there a best practices on how often you recodify?
It's hard to say because whoever did our original codification, a lot of municipalities in Pennsylvania use the same numbering system.
Okay.
So it's there. But other ones, you could see where they've made changes over the years because I could see the numbering system changes and also to make it more user-friendly in trying to find things within... I guess because I'm so used to using it, to me, it's a simple system that we have.
But does the recodification process also review our law and make sure that it's consistent with state and federal law?
Usually, if... whether myself or Dave Smith, if we see a change in the law from the state...
Sure.
Obviously, we then update our codified ordinances. What it is is probably updating some of the What it is, is probably updating some of the terminology.
Okay.
That's where really some of the updating would be required. And I know of a couple of ordinances that we pretty much don't even use anymore.
Sure. I, I seem to remember something about not keeping lions and tigers in, in the city of Williamsport, which the discussion earlier reminded me of. It's my favorite ordinance. I can't remember the number off the top of my head. But anyway, I, I guess I would ask Finance to follow up on that and, and make a recommendation to council on whether or not we should pursue that this year, next year, you know, at, at what point maybe we build it into the budget process, et cetera. Any other comments or questions? Hearing done, Mrs. Frank on the resolution.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Novello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and that resolution is approved. Next item on the agenda is resolution authorizing Williamsport Bureau of Police to enter into a purchase agreement for three vehicles. Mrs. Frank?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Williamsport authorizing the Williamsport Bureau of Police to enter into a purchase agreement for three vehicles. Be it hereby resolved that the City Council of the City of Williamsport authorizes the Williamsport Bureau of Police to purchase two 2016 Ford police interceptors SUV vehicles per the attached and one 2017 Ford Fusion sedan. Be it further resolved, the appropriate city officials are hereby authorized to execute any documents necessary to effectuate this contract.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second on the resolution, please.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Officer Miller, how are you?
Very good, thank you. Members of council, council president, members of the administration, the Williamsport Bureau of Police is looking for acceptance of this resolution to move forward with purchasing three new vehicles to be used by the Williamsport Bureau of Police. You see, two of those vehicles will be marked patrol SUV vehicles to be used by the Patrol Division. One would be an unmarked vehicle utilized by our Detective Division. Brought this before both Public Works Committee and Finance Committee, and it received a positive recommendation for both committees. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith, for public safety. Works.
It actually, this normally would come to public safety, but due to the time in ordering these particular vehicles, it was moved to Public Works. And we did discuss that at Public Works where two of the members are on the Public Safety Committee. So, again, we, we look at having to replace vehicles practically every year. We were also given an inventory with the mileage of some of the vehicles that are currently in place that have well over 100 and some thousand miles on them. And we have to remember that this is all stop and go driving. It's not on the highway. Probably if you equated it, I don't know what the formula would be, but when we have 125,000 on local driving, maybe that equates to 250,000 out on the road. The vehicles are used very hard. There's a lot of idling with them. And they have been kept up, but it comes to a point where we can no longer expend the funds to keep servicing those vehicles. So, we did discuss this. There are going to be two of the SUV vehicles, such as we have already purchased two and are working out extremely well with the department. As a matter of fact, they seem to be getting, be getting more use than some of the other vehicles because they like those. So, two of those would be purchased. The one thing that I wanted to note that we had talked about when the other two were purchased is the radio equipment. These will be equipped with the new radios that we talked about and bringing the radio system up to modern-day, high-technology standards. And that can be brought right in with the bidding because that will be purchased under the CoStarz agreement. We voted on this and voted to send it to full council with a positive recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mealy, Finance?
And council did the same thing. We, pretty much, these, these three cars all fit within the existing budget, or more or less within the existing budgeted amount. And, and according to Ms., to Officer, to Jody Miller, Officer Miller, it's getting all of us tonight. It's my turn because I made pun of John. The, the interceptors have been exceptionally popular because of the increased amount of space they offer for, for our officers. Mr. Miller did mention that the Ford Fusion was an attempt, obviously, at some economy. Our, our detectives don't need quite such high functioning vehicle, shall we say. And it also boasts a, what I consider a somewhat meager amount of fuel economy, but thank you very much. It is, it does get, I think, six more miles to the gallon in the city than, than our average police car, so. Aside from that, Finance forwarded to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Comments or questions of the members of council? Just a quick question I have. I don't know if you would know this off the top of your head or if you even track it, but how does the Explorer mileage compare to the Taurus mileage in, in police usage?
The current usage of the two SUVs that we currently have?
Now that we have a little bit of experience with those in, in real world as opposed to what they're rated for, I don't know if you keep up with their miles per gallon usage.
I'm not sure about that. I mean, I can tell you that currently, the one SUV, the first one we have on the road now is, is around 12,000 miles and the other one's around 9,000. And they were put into service just in the fall. So, they are obviously being used pretty much around the clock.
I, I didn't know if you had any kind of metrics for, you know, it's too early for maintenance costs compared to the Toruses or even for the old Crown Vics, but if you had some kind of, if, I don't know if the department tracks sort of gasoline usage per mile, that kind of stuff?
I can't speak to the gasoline usage. I have asked other departments that are using the SUV so far, you know, how they're holding up. So far, they're holding up very well. That was a concern with the Toruses, the first Taurus that we bought when we switched from the Crown Vic to the Taurus. We've had numerous issues with it and it's in the 60,000-mile range, so that was a concern as well. We're hoping we don't see that trend continue with the rest of the Toruses that we have, but the first one we've had some, we've had some concerns with.
Okay. So, we'll have to, one of the things we should maybe do, you know, once we have a few of each and each, each of the Toruses, I guess the oldest Taurus is only now a couple, three years old and, and once the Explorers get to three or four years old, is to kind of take a pause and revisit and say, "Do we want to continue down this path or, or give somebody else a shot?" I know we've been a Ford place for quite some time and would hate to change, but, you know, with new vehicles, we should evaluate it.
Yeah, absolutely.
When the time's right. All right, thank you. Ms. Novello?
Just a quick comment. I would think that we're looking at multiple drivers and multiple driving styles at the same time, so I would think tracking mileage and gas usage would be pretty tedious kind of a thing to do with the multiple types of driving styles we have among our officers.
Absolutely. But it should average out across time.
We should find something there, right. We should definitely find something there.
Yeah.
I mean, my only suggestion there would be, I mean, obviously, when we fuel up with the vehicles, we're supposed to input the specific car number and the specific mileage at time of fuel up, so I don't know if there'd be any way to do an analysis of how much fuel's being put in the vehicle compared to how much mileage you're getting in the end, but that might be your best shot of actually getting out that, to determine that amount of idle time and...
And that would be the way to do it. And, and again, some cars on any given day are going to idle or whatever more than others, but over time, you know, we could take three years of history on the Toruses and now six months at least on a couple of Explorers and go, "All right, we can project out that our fuel costs are going to go up or down or not change at all as a result of switching from one to the other," and even go back to do the Crown Vics as a baseline. Ms. Smith?
One comment on that. Since the SUVs have come out, most all police agencies throughout the United States are no longer buying the Taurus product. They have gone into the SUV. Because of the additional space, there's some other amenities that make it easier, especially for taller people. They have more headroom and as you see these on the road throughout the United States, also the state police have purchased, most of their new purchases are of the SUV vehicles. So, I, I think that's kind of the trend on, on where they're headed at this point. Yeah, there are also four-wheel drive, which is automatic. And the, the new ones have a lot of amenities that the old Crown Vic doesn't have. I mean, it's standard, a lot of items on there are standard and are very heavy-duty, rugged for police use because what we found in our own company is when you have one driver that's driving the vehicle, you get really into how much gas mileage that it's being used, you have one person driving it. We also have found that multiple drivers, taking the same identical vehicle and purchasing two of them, you have multiple drivers on one and one driver on another, the maintenance on the multiple-driver car or vehicle is always much greater when you have many people driving the vehicle. And, you know, I've talked to some automotive people about that and they really don't have an answer other than what Don said, that there's different driving habits and the car reacts in, in different ways to different drivers, I guess. So, we seem to be, at this point, from what I'm hearing from you and other folks, that they're a pretty good vehicle. So, time will tell over the long haul with it.
Yeah, and, and my questions are primarily about budgeting in terms of, you know, making sure we can project fuel and maintenance in particular, but also, you know, evaluate anything that you have new. I know a couple of us have a little bit of experience with the Ford Explorer models and, and at least I've had mostly good experiences with mine, and I think you have with yours.
Correct, yes.
Ms. Mealy, did you?
Just two small notes. One, that it seems as though our officers are now carrying, I think, more equipment in many ways within the vehicle as well than, than officers used to when that starts to necessitate a larger vehicle just to allow for all of the laptop, et cetera, et cetera. And secondly, I believe when we looked at just the, the off-the-rack quoted mileage from the companies, it was maybe a two-mile-per-gallon difference between the Explorer and the Taurus. However, I think that is 10% difference when you account for the fact that they both get such low gas mileage. But anyway, that, just for what that's worth.
Sure, absolutely. Ms. Allison?
Is there a noticeable difference with the SUV as far as, I know, regular driving, the vision and line of sight? Does that affect?
Yeah, that does come into play in two references. One, they like the elevated position that the SUV gives, gives you a little bit better vantage point while on patrol to be elevated versus the car. Also, I can tell you from my own personal experience, the view from the car is very subdued. It seems like the window height all the way around is much shorter in the Taurus than it is in the SUV, so you actually get a little bit better, you know, view from the SUV in, in two respects. So, from, from that standpoint, it seems to be a much superior vehicle.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing done, Ms. Frank on that resolution, please.
Yes.
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 Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution is approved. Thank you very much for that. Next item on the agenda is resolution for police server, Department Server virtualization project. Ms. Frank?
Police Department Server virtualization project. Be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Williamsport to award the contract for a police department server virtualization project for the City of Williamsport to GDC IT Solutions in Chambersburg in the amount of $46,366.50. Whereas GDC IT Solutions will procure, install, configure, train, and provide a support of supporting Police Department Server virtualization project as indicated in the statement of work, which is included in the project proposal. And whereas the City of Williamsport has the option to lease the cost of this project for 36 months at a cost of $1,511.30, cost of $1,511.30 per month with a dollar buyout at the end of 36 months. Total financing cost of this project will equal $54,406.80. Be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Williamsport that the mayor and the city controller be authorized to execute the contract between the City of Williamsport and GDC IT Solutions.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second on the resolution, please?
I'll move.
Second.
Hearing motion and a second. How are you, Ms. Frank?
Good evening. Good evening, President Williamson, members of council. And before you, the resolution to, for your consideration for a police department virtualization project. This was reviewed by Finance and also sent to the solicitor for his review, and they both recommended a positive recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Mealy for Finance?
Finance did review this and, and found it to be within the budget that we allotted for both this and the, the next agreement within this year's, within this year's budget, 2016 budget for the city. And we made a quick note of, actually, a small amendment to the resolution to reflect the, the total cost of the financing. If we were to opt for financing instead of paying a lump sum, it would add about $8,000 to the ticket price of this and would not affect service quality at all. That is to say that we would continue to have tech support available to us for the near future regardless of whether we opt to pay the entire lump sum or do the financing. Consequently, it was Finance's opinion that we should pay the entire lump sum, given that it was budgeted in this year's budget and given that it's a small amount and, and obviously is not going to break the bank to take it all out of this year's budget, that, that we should move forward with, with the $46,366.50 in this budget year. Aside from that, given Finance, given some of members of Finance, myself included somewhat limited knowledge of the needs of our virtualization project, we, we deferred to Mr. Ray on the particulars and, and said that it looked good to us.
Thank you. Comments or questions from members of council? Ms. Smith?
This actually is scheduled for public safety next Tuesday. So, if it's passed tonight, that's fine, but we would like you to appear because we have a lot of questions on what this even is. So, it is on the public safety agenda. Obviously, we won't be voting on it, but we do need a thorough explanation of what this process is and what it entails and why it needed to be purchased. So, it is on the public safety agenda, so we'll discuss that on, on Tuesday.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Other comments or questions? I have one for both this and the one that follows. I spoke with the solicitor briefly before the meeting and just need to offer amendment to put it into the typical form that we would have normally. Resolutions would have the whereas, whereas, and then the be it resolved statement. And so, my amendment is, changes nothing substantively. It's simply to move the, the paragraph that is, let me make sure I'm on the right one, that is be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Williamsport to award the contract. That first paragraph, move that down to a position immediately following the last whereas statement. And at the same time, then amend the final paragraph to read, be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Williamsport. So, just changing the word hereby to further, to put it in the form that we would normally see the resolutions, which is to say, we say whereas, then we say whereas, and then we say be it hereby resolved, and then we say, "We're going to resolve more stuff and we'll resolve even more stuff." So, if the city clerk understands my amendment, I make that motion.
Was, was this reviewed by a solicitor?
I believe Ms. Ray said that.
It was?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
There's a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second? Motion and a second. Any comments or questions from members of council? Hearing done, Ms. Frank on the amendment, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Novello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the amendment is approved. Any other comments or questions on the resolution in its entirety as amendment? Hearing done, Ms. Frank on the resolution, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Novello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution is approved with, of course, public safety getting into the weeds of the, the details of the, the project. It's the technical side of the project later on. Next item on the agenda is City Hall Server Virtualization Project. Mrs. Frank?
City Hall Server Virtualization Project. Be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Williamsport to award the Be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Williamsport to award the contract for a city hall server virtualization project for the City of Williamsport to GDC IT Solutions in Chambersburg in the amount of $46,366.50.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion a second on the resolution?
Go.
With motion a second, comments or questions? Mrs. Katz.
Since this is going to go to public safety and say there is a situation, problems or whatever, and we've already passed this in council, is this going to be a conflict?
I think we didn't add any conditions to the passage of the last one. It would be a courtesy discussion. I would imagine if an issue arose, we could delay the implementation for a few days until the, the technical details were worked out.
Sure, that's satisfactory, I think.
We don't anticipate that, but.
It's kind of the way that it was scheduled.
Yeah.
You know, we could have had it on the Public Works on Tuesday, but it didn't get scheduled that way. So, as I pointed out, we really need to know the details of this. Hopefully, there won't be any issues there. If there would be some major issue, I think we would, it would behoove us to notify the president of council right away if, if we saw any major issues with it. If that's satisfactory to everybody.
That works for me.
I just wanted to, you know, that we're not jumping the gun. You know, that's, that's why I'm questioning, you know, voting on this. Do you think there's any problems, Mr. Smith?
Pardon me?
Do you think there's any problems with this?
Probably not. I, I would say I wouldn't see any major problems with it. I don't know. I don't have any detailed information on it at this point, and that's why we would like to discuss it as to exactly what is being done, what equipment is being purchased, why it's being purchased and this type of thing. I, I think from a financial standpoint of view, as Ms. Mealy said, the dollars are there, it is capable of being purchased. And, you know, that's however the rest of council wants to handle it. I mean, I'm not insisting that it be held up. I'm not trying to do that whatsoever, but I, I think I'll rely on other members of council to, to make that decision however you want to go. If it's satisfactory with you, as I pointed out, if there's something major that we see, we would notify the president of council right away.
Well, I think we should have a report then from public safety on this then, shouldn't we? Or is that?
We can, and of course, we'll be able to review their minutes and, and that sort of thing. What, I mean, if we wanted to take formal action, the formal action would be to set a condition of positive recommendation from, we didn't do that on the prior one, but we could set a condition of positive recommendation from the public safety committee. Or we can sort of have the expectation that the administration would kind of take a pause until the, the concerns that the committee might have on a technical basis might be resolved in their minds before they executed the, the contract.
I mean, I understand Mrs. Katz's position, and maybe if, if the rest of council feels we should condition it, you know. I, I don't really have a strong feeling either way, but other council members may have a strong feeling, and if that's the direction in which you wish to go, I certainly don't object to it.
Well, I'm just looking at, you, you are familiar with a lot of details in something like this, and we were looking at the financial end, and yes, there are things that we don't understand, as Justin knows we don't understand, and not having your committee look at this, I, I would not like to see us jump the gun and not have all our, our ducks in line here.
Well, maybe someone can make.
Yeah, but we already voted on the other one, and I don't know, you know.
Let me recognize the solicitor here for a second.
You can always do a motion to reconsider on the prior one.
Sure.
And add the condition, and on this one, you could do it as part of the other amendment to move the first paragraph to the third spot.
Okay. So, I'll, if, if that's what the sense of council is, then I'll make that as part of my amendment in the reorganization of the language, and then we can do a motion to reconsider and add that condition into the prior one as well, if that's what people prefer. Okay. Ms. Allison.
And, yeah, it's only five days till public safety.
Tuesday, yes.
So, I mean, I would suggest if they don't find any problem with it, then it could go ahead. You could be informed by Mr. Smith, and then.
If you'll just let me know that you've made the positive recommendation, and then you'll know as well, of course, because you'll be at the meeting. Any other comments before I make my motion? Then, for this resolution, I make the same motion I did before, which is to move the first paragraph to immediately following the whereas statement. Also, to change the word hereby to further, and then finally add a condition that the approval of this resolution is subject to the positive recommendation of the public safety committee on Tuesday, April 5th. Is that the right date? Can I have a second on that motion, please?
Second.
Here your motion a second. Any comments or questions? Ms. Frank on the amendment, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and, and the resolution's amendment is passed. Next item, or, I'm sorry. Any other comments or questions on the resolution itself? Ms. Mealy.
Just one quick note that it seems to me might have happened, well, two quick notes, I suppose. One to note that the city is not currently hosting its own website, for those who are curious. That was one element that we had, that we had discussed under this particular item. And the other is that we had discussed whether or not maintenance of sort of city servers was still, was still something that we wanted to continue with, or whether an option like the cloud or something like that would be, was something we should look into. And Justin had said that at this point, it was still, it would still appear to be less expensive for us to host all this material within city hall than to outsource it to, you know, an, an off-site storage location server. I don't remember exactly what the numbers were that you said, Justin, though I didn't write them down. I think it was something like 400 bucks a month or something like that for cloud.
It all depends on what you're, what you're looking at and the scale of the project and stuff like that, so.
I think it's 400 a year.
No, I think that was website hosting. I think that was our website. It was 400.
Oh, okay.
I think I pay almost that much for cloud service for myself. So, but anyway, that currently this would appear to be the most cost-effective strategy for dealing with our IT needs.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Hearing none, Ms. Frank on the resolution as amended.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and that resolution is carried. Before we move on to the next item on, on the agenda, I'll entertain a motion to reconsider the resolution connected to the police department server virtualization project.
Go move.
Hearing a motion a second. Any comments? That's not a, anyway, on the motion to reconsider?
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
You're voting yes about to reconsider the prior motion.
But you asked for any comments on the motion to reconsider.
No, I'm sorry.
I was like, wait a second.
I don't think you can comment on a motion to reconsider. I don't.
Yes, Dennis.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and, and so the motion, the resolution for the police department server virtualization project is on the floor, and to hopefully speed these things up, I'll make a motion to add the same condition that city council's approval is subject to positive recommendation from public works committee on Tuesday, April 5th.
Safety.
Safety, excuse me, public safety committee on Tuesday, April 5th. That's my motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
A motion a second. Any comments or questions on that amendment? Hearing none on the amendment?
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the resolution is yet again amended. Now, I believe we have one more vote on this one. Any comments or questions on the resolution as now twice amended? Not thrice, but twice. Hearing none, Ms. Frank on the resolution, approval of the resolution yet again.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the resolution is approved yet again. I think I followed all the proper procedures there. Excellent. Our next item on the agenda is Mr. Joe Girardi will tell us a little bit about a request for demolition on 660 Campbell Street.
Who is this again?
Mr. Joe.
Mr. Joe.
Mr. Joe G.
Good evening, Dr. Williamson, member of council.
It's Joey GDU.
Joey GDU.
What you have before you.
Dr. WDU.
I have attached a request from Susquehanna Health for the demolition of a structure loaded at 660 Campbell Street, which is located in the institutional district. The dwelling was used, it was used as a single family dwelling and is currently vacant. And as always, they will plant grass within three months and seed it, so, and we do have representation here in case anybody wants to ask any questions of myself or of Mr. Daniker.
Thank you very much. I have a motion a second on the demolition.
Go move.
Hearing a motion a second. Comments or questions, members of council? Ms. Smith?
Mr. Girardi, maybe you can't answer this question, but perhaps someone from the administration can. Susquehanna Health is coming to us with two demolitions. Please correct me if I'm going to make incorrect statements. We do not have a pilot program in place with Susquehanna Health, is that correct?
I believe.
To your knowledge.
To my knowledge, that is correct.
Also, to your knowledge, or anyone in the administration's knowledge, the pilot program due to not having a contract, we have not received any dollars from 2015 that we should have received in the budget. Is that correct?
I believe you are correct, but I've had someone on my administration, or the mayor's administration to verify that, but I believe you are correct.
Does anyone in the administration know when this pilot program that expired two years ago is going to be brought to city council? Because we, we have an entity coming here that's asking for us to do something, and if that is true, that they have not paid the 2015 pilot program due to the lack of a contract, are we really properly allowed to make these demolitions occur because we don't have a contract?
Well, I, I would say this much, no matter whether we had a contract with Susquehanna Health or not, they still have the ability to come in and request a demolition permit for a structure in the City of Williamsport, and you would have that ability to say no, but that would be up to this board. But whether there's a contract or not, they would still have the right to come in front of city council for a demolition permit. I could be wrong. Mr. Lubin?
Well, and if you're going to turn them down, it has to be based on something within the demolition ordinance.
Right. Well, going back to my second part of my original question, does anyone know where we stand with this pilot program after two years of expiration of it? And again, if this is true, if we're not receiving any funding, at some point, this is going to be damaging the city coffers. The mayor isn't here, I guess.
Mr. Nichols.
We can't get an answer to that? Or, Mr. Nichols, you have some knowledge of this?
Yes, we are prepared to bring the pilot agreement to the next meeting. We have met as administration. I'm meeting with SH officials to wrap up any loose ends, which I don't think there are any. We did make a couple of changes to simplify the agreement. You know, instead of having all the properties listed and then paying by property, they agreed to just pay us a million dollars a year and give all employees free health care, and that's effective tomorrow, April 1. Just so, you know, that.
So, we would have the money then to buy the lion and tiger cages, correct?
With the agreement, it will be for council next meeting. There was a lot of moving parts to this, but it's not been two years. Typically, in the pilot agreement, we receive the payment at the end of the year. We did account for it in 2015, but, so, instead of getting it at the end of the year, we're going to be getting it this year, but it'll still be receivable for last year, but anyway. A simple answer is it'll be before you at the next meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Plus, the check presentation will be at your committee meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions, members of council?
So, I'll, I'll expect it, I will expect it on the finance agenda. I'm just saving myself a reminder. Mr. Nichols, I can expect to see that on the finance agenda then?
Yes.
In two weeks' time?
Yes.
I'm just saving myself a reminder, so I wanted to confirm if that was where we'd be seeing it. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none on the demolition, request for demolition?
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Smith. Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the request for demolition is approved. Next item on the agenda is also a request for demolition. Mr. Girardi?
Nothing to add other than it's a different property, 721, 723 Cherry Street in the institutional district. And again, it'll be seeded, and we do have a gentleman here in case you have any questions.
Motion a second on this request. I hear a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms., any comments or questions on this request for demolition? Mr. Allison.
Hello. Mr. Girardi, this house here is to the north of Antioch Church, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Have there been other properties demolished on that side of that block by the hospital?
Yes.
Okay, more up towards.
Yeah, it's actually in the district, if you remember correctly, there was a district that was the institutional district that was part of the overall hospital demolition where we did our thing as a city redevelopment. Then there was another area outside of it that they had the option to buy properties in that area, still the institutional district, but they didn't set it up the same way they did in that other larger area. But this is still in the institutional district. They had, and they have demoed homes on that side of the street, yes.
To your knowledge, do they have any plans for that particular area?
No, we do not have anything at this point from the hospital, any type of future development plans. I do know they intend to seed it like they normally do. I would probably say if they grow and have future growth, they'll probably turn some of these areas into parking. But at this point, they don't, I don't have any plans unless Mr. Daniker can.
Yeah.
Nothing at this point.
Okay. I wondered, because of the close proximity to the church, you know, what plans might be for that area or.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions, Ms. Katz?
How long has this place been empty?
How long has this place been empty?
This property on Cherry Street has been empty for about three years.
Because it's a beautiful home. It's a shame, it really is a gorgeous home, and it's a shame that it's going to be demoed.
Well, let me, let me, let me apologize by that comment. On the northern side of the double has been empty for quite some time, well over here. The southern side of the double.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, Ms. Frank on the request for demolition?
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
We hate to say yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and that request is also approved. Next item.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Girardi. Next item on the agenda is except for filing. We have Public Safety Committee meeting minutes of January 12, 2016, Finance Committee meetings of January 19 and February 16, 2016, Public Works Committee meeting minutes of January 12, 2016, and January 19, 2016, Harb minutes of February 16, 2016, and the Bureau of Codes' end-of-year report for 2015. I have a motion a second to approve these for filing. I hear a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any comments or questions? Mrs. Katz?
Love the report from Codes. Where did, where did Mr. Joe go there? This is, this is really great. It really was. And you can see where the rental ordinance is really in effect, and it really is fantastic to look at. Good job.
Appreciate that. I'll let the gentleman do most of the work next time.
Hearing no further comments, Ms. Frank to accept these for filing.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.